Let's call our meeting order. We're going to stand and say the pledge. And I'm going to ask Alderwoman Demby if she'll say her prayer after we.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God.
Our mics are a little hot tonight.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Miss. I was scared.
Our heavenly Father, we are so grateful to you for this day, for it's the day that you have made. And you said in your word that we should rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for just carrying us through the day, protecting us and taking care of us and providing for us. And as we come at this hour to take care of business of this city of Vidalia, Lord, we ask that you lead us in the way that we should go, for we realize that we cannot do anything without you, but with you we can do all things. So it's in Jesus's name that we pray and we give thanks to you for everything. Amen.
Amen. Sorry about that. Bobby, can you hear us okay? I mean, that feedback? Okay. All right. First thing we're going to have is roll call.
To Vidalia, the board of aldermen roll call for the regular meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen, dated February 8th, 2022. Alderman Bitts.
Present.
Alderman Molyneux.
Present.
Alderman Garner.
Here.
Alderman Probst.
Here.
Alderman Tiller.
Here.
Mayor and director show their performance.
Okay. Thank you. All right. You have in front of you the minutes. If there's not any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion made by Alderman Garner. Here, a second.
My second.
Can y'all back me down just a little bit? I just want to really. Second was by Alderwoman Demby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. We're to the public comment section on our current agenda items. This is where the public can comment on any of the items that we might have. If you've looked over the agenda, if anybody has any questions or comments, they're welcome to speak at this time. Anybody got any comments? All right. If not, we're going to move on with our presentation of financial statements for December 2021 and our CPA, Ms. Deborah Moke. Deborah?
To my financial statements include balance sheet as of 12/31/2021, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the six months ending December 31st, 2021, a summary budget to ask for comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to act for comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to all department heads and aldermen for their reviews. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of 10.4 million, including restricted funds of 8 million in the hydro fund and 1 million in the sales tax fund. Investments are at 4.6 million, including the hydro reserve fund at 2.4 million, 1.5 million in the general fund, and 705,000 of ARPA funds. Total assets are 41 million, total liabilities are 10 million, fund balances are 31 million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the six months ending December 31st, 21 includes combined revenues of 16.9 million, total expenditures of 17.9 million, score net change in positions of 1 million, a negative 1 million. Revenues are running under budget at 36% due to the timing of revenue collection and a lower-than-expected hydro royalties for the first six months of the fiscal year. Sales tax collections remain higher than the same period last year. We do anticipate the hydro royalties to catch up with the increase in production due to the rising Mississippi River levels and with the largest increase in royalty rates beginning in January. Total expenses are at 48% of budget, which is below budget levels. Personnel costs are slightly above budget levels. Materials and supplies and other services are higher than budget due to higher utility costs. A negative change in net position is due to the payment of hydro rebates and the amount of 2.5 million paid in November of 2024. The balance will turn around, the negative fund balance will turn around as the year progresses. We are seeing increases in utility revenues due to the higher energy costs we are experiencing. This is a nationwide problem. Electricity and gas are projected to be higher during the winter months, but the high utility revenue will help offset the town's higher energy cost as well. We will monitor revenues and cost of the utilities as well as customer receivable accounts to ensure we collect what is owed. We have borrowed 4.25 million on the transmission line and substation to date, covering materials, engineering costs, legal fees incurred, and securing portions of the rights of ways from the landowners. The project began in June of 2020. We have received the appraisal on the last remaining parcel of land for the right-of-way and are prepared to take necessary steps to move forward on the acquisition. We are still working with FEMA to recover emergency work into removal costs caused by the winter storm of 2021. The town is expecting to receive $267,500 reimbursement. Everything has been submitted for category B emergency preparedness, and we are working on the remaining projects. Category A for debris removal has been submitted, and we are waiting on the approval from FEMA. We have a telephone conference call every two weeks with FEMA. Next, we will be working to receive funding on category F utilities. The town has received approximately 705,000 of the 1.4 million allocated to the town from the American Rescue Plan. This money is on the balance sheet as a special revenue fund. None of this money has been spent and is being held as a liability until the funds are expensed. The remaining 705 will be sent later this year. The money is not included in the current budget, and any expenses paid using these funds will need more approval. Eligible uses include responding to the public health emergency, negative economic impacts, revenue loss due to COVID-19 public health emergency, provide minimum pay to eligible workers, and to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. A final rule has been issued, expanding the implementation and administration of monies under the ARPA program. The town was denied approval from the state for the water sector program, which, if approved, we would have requested ARPA funding for the 25% match. The most beneficial use of the ARPA funding would be for long-term benefits to the town. These financial statements include capital outlay of 150,000 of a $5.5 million budget. We will begin working on the budget for the next fiscal year beginning in March. We would encourage the aldermen to attend meetings so they can understand the process and participate in the discussion.
Okay. Any questions from the council to Ms. Moke on our financial report? Deborah, thank you very much. Next, we're going to have, we're going to have Silas Simmons come up and, nope, let's see. No, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead of our occupational license. We're going to have board discussion vote on approval of occupational license. We have jewelry, Avenue Studio LLC. Are they here tonight? Okay. They're located, showing 1202 Palm. They're going to be working out of their residence. There are handmade jewelry and accessories. Any questions on this? Owners, Ms. Condalizia Jones? Okay. They're here. Motion, we accept this occupational license?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Garner. They're here, a second? Second. Second by Alderwoman Demby. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have visible changes. Hair Salon, Mr. Warren and Kathy Merritt, are they here? Okay. All right. Just a change of ownership. This is the one over there by Popeyes, if y'all know where that's at. Anyways, change of ownership. Warren Lane Merweather?
Merritt.
Merritt, okay. Looks like Merweather, handwritten one. Okay. Any questions? Here, motion to accept? Motion made by Alderman Betts. They're here, a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Probst. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have, is there a sign application? No sign. Okay. They have two packets. All right. Next one, now we're to, this is a result of the hard work I was speaking of, saying, Ms. Deborah Moke and all of her staff has done on keeping up with all of our financial information and making sure everything's done on time and done right. And we have with us today Scott Adams. He is a CPA with Silas Simmons, who is the independent CPA firm that does our audit. So, Scott?
Good evening. I'll certainly echo the hard work and assistance we get from Deborah. You know, we come up here and try not to top the town people or take people from doing their daily tasks, but certainly it does require some effort. And Deborah and other staff members here have been extremely helpful, and we appreciate the team y'all have here at the town hall. Just on behalf of Silas Simmons, you know, we've got a long relationship with the town, and we certainly appreciate that. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be the auditors for the town. Of course, we're always, typically, this is the big meeting I come to, but we're always available at any time during the year. With that said, y'all should all have in front of you the audited financial statements, and inside of that is the governance letter that has some required communication that we're required to communicate. I'll do the little letter there at the end. Just to hop into the audited financial statements themselves, pages one and three of our reports is what we call our auditors' report. And that's where our responsibility is to issue an opinion on the financial statements that follow those three pages. The financial statements themselves are the responsibility of management and the governing board. Again, our responsibility is to come in and do an audit on the financial statements and give an opinion, which we have done in this report here. On page two there, at the top of page two, is where we actually issue our opinion, and we have issued an unqualified opinion, which means we do believe that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects for the fiscal year June 30th, 2021. The letter goes on to say there's also some required supplemental information in here that's required either by the GADP or state legislation. We include those as part of the report, and we don't express an opinion. If we did find conflicting information, we would be required to at least acknowledge that or bring that up to you. We were not aware of any conflicting information in those reports. And then finally, there's also some additional supplementary schedules toward the back. We do issue an opinion on those, and again, it's an unqualified clean opinion that we do believe those are all fairly stated in all material respects. It's about 85 to 90 pages here, so I'm not going to read through every single page of the report, but I'll certainly hit on a few things here. Starting on page 11 is really the financial statements broken down by line item. It kind of breaks down your assets, liabilities, revenues, expenditures, things of that matter. As far as on page 11 there, we've got our total asset of $83.7 million. That's about a $7 million increase from the prior year. The two primary things that really pushed that up was investment in fixed assets, that was about 5 million for the year. And then, as you see on page 11, just across the board, interest grew up a little bit and kind of made up the rest of that increase. Toward the middle section is the liabilities of the town. Total liabilities overall increased roughly about 3 million. About 3.3 million of that is due to issuing the electric bonds for the construction that's been ongoing, which also increased the fixed assets on the asset side. Overall, the net position or net income from year over year was up 3.9 million. Obviously, a positive thing when you're reviewing financial information, you obviously want to go positive there. Page 12 is our statement of revenues and expenses. Revenues year over year, they're up. The program revenues, which are your charges for governmental services and your electrical or utility-type revenues, were at 17.4 million for the year. Your general revenues, which the two biggest components are sales tax and hydro royalty funds, they were down about 400,000, primarily the hydro funds. The sales tax was up year over year, and hydro royalty was under, I believe, what we were expecting to come in for the year. Expenses overall were 31.7 million, which is a decrease of about 400,000 year over year. So that kind of gets you to where you're changing your net position from year over year on the prior page there. Pages 13 through 20 kind of breaks things down by fund, governmental funds and your business-type funds, the utility fund and the riverfront development fund. Governmental funds, revenues over expenditures for the year were up 650,000, so you had a positive there. On the business funds, again, which is the utility fund and the river development fund, you're at an increase of 1.3 million year over year prior to any transfers that were required for certain funds to be made during the year. So I guess overall, from, I won't go page by page there, but certainly moving, trending in a positive direction there. Pages, let's see, 21 through 49 are the notes to the financial statements. This is going to give you more detail on the financial information presented in the front of the report. It's going to break down, you know, fixed assets are 50 million, but this is going to break it down by category. You know, breaks down your debt by different bond issuances or whatever the debt's related to, things of that nature. So it gives you more detail. Certainly, we recommend that everybody read through that, but I don't know that we need to review all that at this exact moment. Pages 50 through 57 are the required supplementary information, which I mentioned already, required by GADP standards or the legislative auditor. Again, we don't issue an opinion, but we do not come across any conflicting information there. 58 through 64 is other supplemental information. Again, this is just more detail on the financial statements in the front of the report. And now pages 65 and 66. I'll turn to that real quick. This is a, this is an auditor report that we're required to issue on the internal controls and state compliance. You read through this letter, it goes on to say that as part of the financial statement audit, we aren't necessarily looking at every single control that may be in place at town hall or every single wall or statute that's in place. We're looking at things that might materially mistake the financial statements. And if we were to come across something, we would include it in this section of the report. Happy to report that we did not have any findings associated that we would believe would create a potential for a financial misstatement in the financial statement. Page 67, 68, and 69 are the schedule of findings. Again, nothing to report for the current year. We did have one in 2020. We did determine that that had been corrected and was no longer a finding, therefore it was not included.
And that was the only finding we had, right, Scott?
In the prior year.
And let them know what that was.
That was dealing with timely deposits.
City court, right?
Right. Right. Maybe they were being made biweekly or monthly, and that's just something that obviously you don't want to leave deposits sitting around for an extended period of time. And that was in 2020, correct? So with that said, that's kind of the summary of going through all 80 or 90 pages there. I'll run through the little three-page report with the required communication. Again, just need to make sure, make you aware that our responsibility is to do an knowledge of the financial statements. The financial statements are ultimately the responsibility of management and the governing board. We did issue an unqualified opinion, as I stated previously. We're required to make you aware of any estimates that are in the financial statements. The two biggest estimates that are in the financial statements relate to depreciation on the fixed assets that's based on the useful life of the fixed assets, and you kind of have to estimate that. And then the estimate of the net pension liability, which is the town's participation in the state retirement system, and that's based on actuarial estimates and things of that nature. Of course, those plans received their own independent audit as well. Difficulties or any disagreements with management? Happy to report that we had no issues with the town employees or getting information we needed. Nothing that we're aware of was withheld from us or any issues of that nature, and we had no disagreements as far as accounting standards or accounting policies, the way things are being reported. To our knowledge, we were the only auditors selected, I guess you'd say, to perform this audit. Sometimes there may be a second opinion or a contrasting opinion, and we're not aware of that. And can y'all acknowledge that there was no secondary audit or anything of that nature? Is that correct? Just need to verify.
Yes.
And other than that, I certainly entertain any questions or, again, just let you know that although this is why I'm here to deliver the report, we do course fund throughout the year, and when matters come up, we certainly are eager to help and provide any professional opinion that we need to.
Scott, I want to thank you for your work. People don't know exactly how much work y'all, how many weeks, I mean, they come in and they get in that boardroom, and there's three or four accountants, and we just give them anything they want, and Deborah has always got it lined up perfectly. And y'all, how many weeks do y'all spend? It's pretty extensive.
Typically, two or three weeks onsite, and then, I mean, it's probably about a six-week process. I mean, the bulk of it, obviously, we try to come out here and do, and then, you know, our standard for documentation and things like that take some additional time. But certainly, yes, everything's well organized, and again, we've had no issues with getting information when we request it.
Any questions for council, Scott? Well, again, I just thank you guys. We work, all of us should be proud of this financial information, I mean, this report. There are so many municipalities that are struggling in the state. We don't have to go far to find problems. But Vidalia, I think, is setting the bar for what town should look like as far, especially, you know, being financially run. And I want to ask my hats off to everybody from our utility office all the way back, everybody out in the field doing a good job on their budgets, staying within budgets, communicating, you know, and I can't say enough for all of our employees and department heads for what they do. And again, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
All right.
Any more questions I need to answer, so I can make sure I get them right.
I'm good.
You're good? Well, thank you again, Scott.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. All right. Next we have is Ms. Cassandra Litt. She wants to talk to us a little bit about the Mardi Gras parade.
Good evening, everybody. I want to thank all of y'all for allowing me to come up here and talk about something that's near and dear to my heart, and that's Mardi Gras. That's one of the things that's near and dear to my heart. The name of our Mardi Gras is the Cruel Videll. It started in February 2011. It was an idea of my mother's, and it was a vision. And I got to give a shout out to Tans Hughes and Jack Macklemore. They were the best kept secret, because when I walked into Southern Design and told Tans what I wanted to do, and I wanted me a cute little t-shirt, he created that t-shirt with that famous alligator. And any of you who have purchased those t-shirts, it's fun to find that alligator. And Jack Macklemore made sure I had everything decent and legal. That was before you justified it. And it was something that was created to be fun, not only fun, but respectful and safe. And I'm up here tonight to ask the Cruel Videll, which is the city of Videll, that name represent our community. And I'm asking y'all to please consider participating to make it better and better. And you can bring a float, an antique car, bow wheelers, what do you call them, ATVs? The horses have to get in the back. So I just want to let you know it's February 26th at 3 o'clock. We line up at the Vidella Upper, and we start on time. Although there may be some floats coming off the bridge, they just fall in the back. But we do start on time. That's our foray. And I just want you to know we need more people to participate. You know, people really fast to criticize, that show was a small parade, but there's only as big as the people who come and make it better. We can only put one float in there, that's a little country. So I'm asking everybody to consider participating, bringing their D and P. And I have one more thing. This is not about one float, but since I'm on the agenda already. Bryce McGlocklin, Glenn McGlocklin, and Elizabeth McGlocklin's son is going to be on American Idol on 2/27/22. He's one of the contestants, and hopefully he's going to go to Hollywood. So we need to be cheering and praying that he gets what he's seeking. Do you have a fight? He's going to be out of town? I tried it. And the grand marshal, to keep me neutral, is going to be Travis Johnson. That way, he can have extra beans to throw for us. So I want to thank y'all very much. Thank you for having me up in the, sit down now.
Okay. Thank you.
And I appreciate all of y'all. Please come out and help us make this parade great.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That is a lot of hard work you put in there. Next, we have Miss Lou Fireworks, Ms. Sabrina Doree. And I do want to say Sabrina has took over the handling of the fireworks, and that is probably one of the most anticipated, twice is the most anticipated event in our town that fills up everywhere, both sides of the river. So, all right, she has to be put on the agenda, so here we go.
All right. I'm Sabrina Doree, and I'm here representing the Miss Lou Fireworks. I'm the sole organizer of the fireworks show that you will see on the Fourth of July and New Year's Eve. I took over in 2018. After 2017, we didn't see a fireworks show on the riverfront, and I was a little curious, not upset, because I know that this is, you know, nobody just really writes a check for that. I knew it was an organization that was doing those, but I sought out the lady who had been doing it before, and she was going through a career path change, and she said, "I just, I just can't do it any longer." So I asked her, "Could I please give it a try?" So we did, and it was wonderful. The town of Vidalia has always been a supporter, even back, you know, before I was involved, as has the city of Natchez. And right now, what the town of Vidalia contributes and is matched by the city of Natchez is $5,000 per year. So what that allows is $2,500 per show. Now, in 2018, when I began as the organizer, the minimum cost to get the pyrotechnic to Vidalia, Natchez, was $5,000. So with that contribution from the town of Vidalia and the city of Natchez of 2,500 each per show, or 5,000 each per year, we were guaranteeing the per show or 5,000 each per year, we were guaranteeing the Miss Lou community that there would be a show. And then what I do is I get sponsorships from local businesses, you know, a lot of the local groups, organizations, clubs also, you know, have sponsorships so that we can get it from, you know, just the bare minimum show to that wonderful show that you see every time that you attend. When I first began, it was an average of $1,000 per minute for the pyrotechnics, okay? So a $5,000 show was a five-minute fireworks show. And nobody wants to park and walk for 20 minutes for a five-minute show, right? So, you know, we've never had that bare minimum show, but because of the contributions from Vadaea and Natchez, we've always been guaranteed that the community was going to get their fireworks show. The smallest show that we've, that I have done since 2018 was an $11,000 show and that was this past New Year's Eve. The economy's tough and the cost has increased. Fireworks are from China. So as you can imagine, it has all gone up. The minimum now, since 2020, the minimum to get the pyrotechnic onsite for one show is $10,000. You won't come for less than $10,000. And I have gone and sought out other pyrotechnics. When I first got started, I found Curtis Elkins with Pyromania, he's out of Bossier City. For three months, I did research to figure out who do we need, who is going to give us the best value, you know, because this is not some corporate conglomerate who's writing, you know, a check. These are our local townspeople and businesses who are donating sponsorships for a show. I found Curtis, he's amazing since, you know, since he's come on board with Miss Lou Fireworks, he's now doing the Belling Festival and everything. I mean, he is the Miss Lou Fireworks guy and we love that. But the cost has gone up. The minimum show is now $10,000. So as y'all are getting into those budget discussions, I would just ask that y'all please consider continuing the tradition of guaranteeing the minimum show for the Miss Lou residents. I'll take care of beefing it up with additional sponsorships. I'll take care of taking that $10,000 show to a $20,000 show, right? I'll take care of all of that. But if, when you're planning your budget, if you please consider increasing the annual sponsorship from 5,000 to 10,000 so that we can guarantee that the show will happen, I promise to get the rest up. I know it's a little early to come in, but I wanted to give y'all enough time that if y'all wanted additional documentation of where this money goes and all of that, I have ample time to get that to you. And I will come back again and ask to speak again as we're in those budget meetings, just to remind you, because I know you've got much bigger things on your plate, but I just kind of wanted to put the bug in your ear, reach out and talk about it.
Okay. Any questions, anybody? All right. Thank you, Sabrina. We will certainly put that in our budget discussions as, especially when we talk about our marketing budget, we will, you know, verse all the. We'll get your feelings on that, but I think that probably not going to get a lot of them. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. Next thing we've got is board approval to enter an executive session to discuss personnel matter of the police department. Now, I do want to just let everybody know that this could, if you're here, this concludes, you know, everything on our agenda. The only thing we'll do when we come out of executive session is maybe ratify or support or vote on something when we come out of executive session. So if you want to stick around, you're welcome to do that, but I didn't want you to stick around and it's basically almost over with. So I'm going to leave that up to you, but I do need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alderman Gardner, here a second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderwoman Demby, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we will. Executive session, they're here a second.
Second.
Oh, seconded by Alderman Smith, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're out of executive session now. I need to basically get to ratify and recommend and agree to the personnel matters as just presented by the police chief. And do y'all want to do them one at a time, or personnel matter one, or personnel matter two, or all together?
Let's do them together. I make a motion that we accept the chief's recommendation on both.
Okay, motion made. They're here a second.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Smith, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, do I hear motion adjourned?
Motion.
Not so much.
Motion made by Alderwoman Demby and I think I heard a second from.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Probst, all in favor, say aye. We still have a vote.